I'm relying on it.
Here we go.
Let's do it. Okay.
Good morning. I call to order the September 28, 2023 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. And County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please take the role?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, staff support today. Clerk to the Board, Tony Maranick. County Council is Assistant County Council, Andrew Naylor. Commissioner Savis is out of the office today. Role call, Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schull.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is a public hearing. Item one, approval of a supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2023. 2024 fiscal impact is a net increase in appropriations of $20,216,183. Funding includes beginning fund balance, federal and state grants, charge for services, inter-fund transfers, and debt service. Inter-fund transfers include a $3,425,000 transfer from the general fund. Sandra Montoya is the Budget Manager from the Finance Department, who will present. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Sandra Montoya, Finance for Clackamas County. Before you today is a request for a public hearing on a supplemental budget for nine items with a total budget increase of 2.2 million. Oregon law, found in ORS 294, requires a supplemental resolution before a fund exceeds its budgeted spending limits. So in all cases, all of the funds that I'm going to go through very quickly are those that we project will exceed their current budget, and so we're requesting adjustment to those amounts. Items one, three, four, and six, on the staff report and the resolution, there's an exhibit that details all of these, but all of those supplemental adjustments are for the construction of the library and/or the purchase of the health center building. So they apply to the general fund, non-departmental, to the Library Network Fund, to the Special Grants Fund, with ARPA dollars going to the library and to the Public Health Building, and then the expenditure side of those same items. Item number seven is an adjustment for Clackamas County debt service due to a debt issuance for the purchase of the Public Health Building that we issued a loan for on August of 2023, and that now we're doing a supplemental for the debt service payments that will be made for that facility. Item number eight is for Technology Services Fund in the amount of 3.3 million for operating expenses and contingency for future equipment replacement. And the last three items are just normal operating that comply with Oregon budget law. And with that, I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that, Sandra. Do any Commissioners have any qualifying questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, I will now open the public hearing on this, or the public comment, for this particular item on the supplemental budget. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify on the supplemental budget? Seeing none, Tony, do we have anyone online who would like to testify on the supplemental budget only?
If you would like to testify on this resolution, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and ask, Commissioners, do you have any further discussion? I'll accept a motion.
Chair, I move that we approve the supplemental budget resolution.
Second. Commissioner West has moved we approve the supplemental budget resolution, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Would you please take the poll, Tony?
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much, Sandra, for coming forward. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is the Consent Agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Elected officials. Item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of a personal services contract with employer's overload for temporary election workers. Contract value is $488,000 over two years. Funding is through fees and allocated costs, which may include a small portion of general funds for the county clerk. Item three, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Corrections for parole and probation services funding. Agreement value is $13,962,806 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Corrections. No county general funds are involved for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Human Resources. Item one, approval of an amendment to a personal services contract with standard insurance company for paid family and medical leave equivalent plan and leave administration services. Amendment value is $11,090,123 for five years. Funding is through employee contributions and allocated costs, which may include a small portion of general funds. For the Juvenile Department. Item one, approval of Amendment two, extending the duration of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for the provision of county's participation in the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Title IV reimbursement program. Amendment adds $0 in two years. Agreement value not to exceed $400,000 over 3.33 years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing and Human Services. Item one, approval to apply for a grant to continue the Adult Drugs Specialty Court Program. Anticipated value is $193,448 for 2.5 years. Funding is through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval to apply for a grant to continue the Mental Health Court Specialty Court Program. Anticipated value is $176,277 for 2.5 years. Funding is through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval to apply for a grant to continue providing services as a federally qualified health center. Anticipated value is $7,563,951 for three years. Funding is through the Health Resources and Services Administration. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a public improvement contract, Creative Contract Incorporated, for the Haven House Building and Roof Improvements Project. Contract value is $467,090 for five months. Funding is through the federal Community Development Block Grant Fund. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of an intergovernmental agreement, the Oregon Housing and Community Services for Federal and State Anti-Property Program Delivery System. Agreement value is $45,715,718 for two years. Funding is through a federal pass-through state grant. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of a subrecipient agreement with the City of Lake Oswego on behalf of Lake Oswego Adult Community Center for services to older adults. Agreement value is $132,170 for one year. Funding is through the Federal American Older, Federal Older Americans Act, TRIMET, and Ride Connection Incorporated. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Chair, I'll second.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for the approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner West has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Tony, would you please call the poll?
Commissioner Schull.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes for zero. Thank you very much. Gary, what's next?
Public Communication.
Up next is Public Communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments are to be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take in-person testimony first. And I only have one blue card so far, and I think if they go over three minutes, it's not a bad idea. Les Poole, please come forward. State your name, your area of residence.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in the county, unincorporated. Did you say I get 30 minutes or three minutes?
I said, you know, you give somebody, and say, take the mile, but you know what? You can go a little over.
A little. Well, I've got a few things, and one of them is just a quick question about the fair. I wasn't in town. I love the fair, and I heard it was good, but, you know, it'd be great to get some kind of feedback or something from our fair board folks. It's probably the neatest event we have that showcases the county, and hopefully in the future, we'll have the technology and be able to continue to have a board meeting during Fair Week. That's a really awesome thing that's been able to do in the past. So kudos to the fair board and everybody that's making that happen. I noticed when I was out of town that the Metro President is running for Congress next, and not here to comment about anyone specifically, but when you hear the word metro, you think of parks and open spaces and recycling and the good things metro does. But we rarely hear about what metro's real authority and power is and how, in many ways, they're mismanaging transportation planning and land use and frankly, the quality of our lives in our communities. So I would advise everyone that's watching, and of course, the Commission and the staff here know that metro is a huge, powerful entity that has a lot of control, and I'm not here to say we need to get rid of metro or that there's some easy way to get out of metro, but I would just encourage everyone to continue to question some of the things metro's doing as far as transportation and funding and where we're headed. The last thing I was going to mention is that I noticed the Clackamas Review has changed its format. It's tough times out there, and it's become a monthly now, and there'll be a Milwaukee Review and then a Oregon City Review or News, two separate papers. And I was thinking back how many times I've been in that newspaper and all of the op-eds and things I've submitted, and I went back and looked at some of them, and one of the key themes in my writing, and even going back 10 years, is all about metro and my fear about where we were going to be today, and here we are. You know, I've got 14 seconds left, so I'm doing pretty good. The last thing I'll say is, anything you can do to continue to question and get the word out about the tolling scheme, please do it. A friend of mine called me the other day. In California, they have tolls, and they're, it's working okay, but they're toll roads. People have the option to use them. Well, here's the interesting thing about the money game, and this is the part that's so insidious. The state of Oregon, or California, whoever, let's say they have toll roads. Well, who's collecting the money and administering the tolls? What's being planned for Oregon is a separate entity, and their take of the tolls is incredibly high.
Oh, yeah.
Now, if you drive right now in California on a toll road and you don't have a transponder to automatically flag your vehicle, they take a photo of you and they mail you a bill. Okay, nothing wrong with that, and it says, hey, you owe us six bucks, or eight bucks, or 12 bucks. What comes with it is a policy that if you don't pay that within five days, you don't pay a late payment. That would be maybe somehow reasonable, or at least believable. No, instead, you are now a toll evader. You're an evader now, and when you're an evader, you will not pay a late fee, you will pay a fine, and the assessments on an eight or $10 toll down there, for someone who can't afford to pay it within five days, are $100, $150. Yeah, so just one more reason to say no to tolling.
Thank you.
I do appreciate the extra time. Thank you.
So while you were speaking, I, we had an email a while back for the fair update, and I can read you some highlights if you're interested. Okay. First of all, the county fair was a success. Tuesday, there were no major issues. Tuesday and Wednesday were very hot. Even so, we finished only with a 4% down from last year's record year, because those hot days, people stayed away. So the overall people who was only 4% down. Rodeo was only 2% off from last year. A good response to the changes, some entries. The livestock auction that's on Saturday, mainly for the FHA kids, grossed $830,000, and it's a record.
Wow.
Regarding the building of the new multipurpose building slash Fair Barn, livestock barn, we're working with the City of Camby Planning Commission, two weeks up to 120-day waiting period, and a hearing is anticipated in January 24 for traffic and parking studies. Don't get me started on that, Les. The City of Camby has also requested a landscape and irrigation study be completed, and the permitting timeline's yet to be determined. Their new executive director, whom we think is stellar, Brian Haas, because of this, has had to apply for an extension of the state fair's ARPA allocation to December 31, 2024. The IGA between the county and the fair is nearly complete, a bunch of legal stuff, but it was a good time. People seemed to enjoy it. It sounds like a few records were broken, but we're still in the planning quagmire of trying to get a, replace a building that has been there forever. And the architects, excuse me, the transportation study people who they hired went to the City of Camby and says, you don't need a traffic study, because it will have absolutely no impact. The new barn would have no impact, but the City of Camby has insisted on it. So it is out of the county's hands, and it is out of the fair board's hands, and we are dealing with a different jurisdiction on that. And thank you for asking.
You bet. Thank you much.
You bet. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify today? Seeing none. Tony, is there anyone online?
I will begin with Devon Wardrop Saxton. Please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes.
Hello, good morning. My name is Devon Wardrop Saxton, and I live on the outskirts of Oregon City. I'm not seeing a way to switch on my audio, my video, so I'll just do audio this morning. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you all. I am here today to express my deep concern about last week's decision to withdraw funding from the Regional Arts and Culture Council, RAC. This is a very personal topic for me. I'm an artist in Clackamas County who currently has a grant application open with RAC. There are actually 20 of us in the county now, and this decision last week has actually put all of our applications at risk. So if this decision is not revisited within the next couple of weeks, those applications will, one, no longer be eligible for funding, but, two, also be removed from the review process altogether without anyone ever having even looked at them. This also affects our eligibility for National Endowment for the Arts money that we would have been eligible for during this granting cycle. So I just want to call to your attention how this decision has cut off artists in this area from multiple vital sources of financial support. Last week in the policy session, I heard discussion of local Clackamas-headquartered organizations like the Arts Alliance and the Cultural Coalition. They do great work, but I also want to highlight the difference between applying for a grant with them versus with RAC. So for people like me, an individual artist who is not in a partnership with an organization, the most amount of money I can apply for is $750 for a Cultural Coalition grant. With RAC, with this current granting cycle, I was eligible to apply for up to $5,000. So I just want to highlight the fact that having a wide, diverse range of funding sources is really important for maintaining a healthy arts ecosystem. And so beyond just this personal impact, I also want to express my concern about what this means for Clackamas County as a whole. A healthy arts ecosystem is so vital to our community, and this decision, unfortunately to me, signals that the arts and the artists are not important to Clackamas County, that the economic growth that we drive and the cultural enrichment that we provide are similarly not priorities. And I have a really deeply held belief, which, having heard your remarks last week, I believe you also share, which is that big cities are not the only places that art should be made, and they aren't the only places where art is important. So I urge you to revisit this decision as soon as possible for all of us, the 20 of us who are hanging in limbo with our grant applications, but also for the future of the arts in Clackamas County as a whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Tony, who's next?
If you would like to testify, please use the raise hand feature, and I will call on you in the order received. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, what's next?
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use my time to share the great work that our county employees do every day to serve the public of Clackamas County. Today, want to recognize staff in the Clackamas County Health Centers, which is a division of Health Housing and Human Services. A resident recently wrote in and wrote, "I was laid off and no longer insured. I've been looking for out-of-pocket health care." Adriana Carrillo with the Clackamas County Health Center's phone center was so very kind, gentle, and caring. She relieved the stress I've been going through from being bombarded by unaffordable health care vendors. Adriana was able to plan an appointment for me within a week. Thank you, Clackamas County, for having Adriana as a frontline calming influence. I'm grateful for Adriana's 1 in 10 million warmth and care." So thank you to Adriana Carrillo and our health center, health centers, and all of our health center staff, and especially those on the phone who answer the phone for people who are vulnerable and in need of service. Next, our Clackamas County Parks staff received a note from a resident of Ashland, Oregon, who visited Will Hoyt Springs Park. The person wrote, "This is simply to express my gratitude for the care that has been taken over the last decade or so at Clackamas County's Will Hoyt Springs Park. I have been to many historic mineral springs in Oregon and California, and it is too rare to find one so well-tended. Whoever is responsible, Clackamas County Parks is fortunate to have the benefit of their service." Well, the person responsible is our Parks Ranger Coordinator, Tim Farrell, in our Parks Division of the Department of Transportation and Development, and he supervises several staff and caretakers who work to manage that park. So thank you to Tim and all our staff in county parks for all they do. That is my update today. Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. It was a really good reminder about people who are in need of health insurance, and we have vast county resources. Just call up and ask, and it's totally anonymous, and just letting the folks out there know if anybody is watching, or if you know of somebody who needs assistance with that. And by the way, our clinics are very good. They're truly top-notch professionals, doctors and nurses who work there. Okay, we will now go to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, you're up first.
Yes, I think we're all going to mention our Town Hall on Tuesday on Mental Health and Addictions. I thought it was one of the best Town Halls, actually, that we've had. I think we all shared good information. I particularly had some information on funding streams that I was able to acquire from the National Association of Counties that breaks that down, and I think, given the response that we've had, that we will have really momentum forward to move ahead with a recovery center that is recovery-based, and I just think that's a phenomenal opportunity for this county. And it does bring me to Measure 110. I want to remind people that there is an opportunity out there to join in with a measure that is attempting to be the Measure 110-6. Max Williams is helping to run that, as well as folks like Betsy Johnson. They're going to be addressing the things that need to happen, so we can put public safety back into the matrix of how we treat drug addiction. Not to be punitive, not to, not to say that jail is the best place for people, but from my perspective, to allow that nexus between basically our public safety system as an entrance into drug rehab and drug courts. And we've, through the years since I've been here as a Commissioner, we have really done a very good job getting people to the right place so they can get the treatment they need. So we move them on the way to recovery, and I see this as a next big step forward. I want to thank my colleagues. I think that they have brought the issue up to other counties in the state, and I think that when we go to the November conference, that we all go together with all our counties in the state. I believe Commissioner West has been asked to speak about the recovery model at that, at that conference, so I'm eagerly looking forward to that. I do want to let people know that one of our nonprofits celebrated its 40th anniversary yesterday, and that was Northwest Family Services in King Road in Portland, and they had kind of a picnic lunch out in the rain for that, but I want to just congratulate them. And another group that is really one of our top-notch nonprofits is Children's Center. They're going to have their big party gala on the 29th. I know that I had planned to go, but I can't. As you all know, I donate ravioli dinners to charities, and I had one scheduled that night unbeknownst to me. So I'll be fulfilling my commitment to, to that charity I donated to, and I believe I've also donated a dinner to the Children's Center, and I know, Chair Smith, you're going to be there. So, you know, say hi to everybody for me and tell them the bid on the ravioli dinner that should be up for, in fact, you should all bid on it, and then I'll just have you all over at my house, and then you can donate to a charity.
I'm like there every weekend anyways.
What?
I'm there every weekend anyways.
Oh, you are? Okay. That's actually, that's true. I feed you constantly. It's a pleasure, I have to tell you. With that, I'm just going to end that I have reached out to the Association of Oregon Counties to get the specific notes on the discussion that we had on DUES, to really clarify for you colleagues what that discussion was and what the final decision was. And of course, no decision at AOC is always final. I'm sure it's something we're going to continue to revisit, but that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner West, you're up.
Commissioner Schrader stole a little bit of my thunder. We did have a Town Hall. We've done a series of Town Halls. The last one was on emergency preparedness before this one. This one we did on, because it was Suicide Prevention Month here in September, and the county's made a very active role to be engaged in the Suicide Prevention Month. We, Chair Smith, I believe, spoke to earlier this week the event that we had here on the property where we did some work regarding suicide preparedness, and then we also wanted to make sure that our Town Hall was in alignment with that advocacy and awareness. And so we did that. I thought it was well-attended. We mostly heard, my one critique is, is we mostly heard from special interest groups. We did not, I think we should do more to try to engage in actual everyday citizens in the community and their intersection with this. I love hearing from the special interest groups, and they do bring vital insight. And I know this is a tough topic for people to open up about, maybe in a public setting, so maybe that was part of it, because there still is stigma attached to this, to the disease of addiction and the struggles around mental health. But it would be great for us to find a more creative way, maybe, to get in front of the people that are directly impacted by these things, either families or individuals. But overall, I thought it was fine. It was good, well-attended. I am really excited about just the leadership role that is very apparent and evident in Clackamas County. You know, we're, out of the three big counties, we're the smallest county of the big three, but you wouldn't know it by our leadership in this space. And over the last nine months, I think that we- And over the last nine months, I think that we have definitely not only garnered local attention but national attention about how we are just doing it different than Portland. And I love how the chair always says, you know what? We're doing it the Clackamas way. And I know that this board is unified in that Clackamas way, and the staff has been a pleasure to work with as we kind of look to be creative and innovative in every approach that we take. AOC has reached out to the county. A number of commissioners from across the state have reached out to our county to say, wow, that's a different message than we've been hearing from the state legislature, from the governor's office, from Monloma County, from Portland. We're hungry for something that makes sense and might be solution-oriented, and they're getting that from Clackamas County, a local government. And the chair, I know, is going, sorry if I'm stealing your thunder, Chair, but she's been asked to speak at a leadership opportunity with the Association of Counties to help lead other counties towards this recovery model. I've been asked to do a programming at the National, at the Association of Counties, also joining some work with the National Association of Counties. And other local jurisdictions are picking up what we're doing, and they're doing the same thing. We're modeling something replicatable, and I'm really proud of that. It's real leadership. It's so lacking in Oregon. Oregon has really been lacking true, authentic leadership that's solutions-oriented, and I think we're doing a lot of that in different avenues here in Clackamas County, and there's a lot of engagement. And that's not just, you know, I am very much about the, you know, I've been very transparent about my desire to work in the addiction, mental health space and how that's a passion of mine as a nurse, but the leadership we're showing in tolling and transportation that's impacting state policy, our leadership specifically in public safety, how, you know, we can just point to real studies and outcomes that show that we're just literally doing better. We're a safer, more vibrant, clean community than much, than many of the other populated, highly populated counties in the state. So I'm done bragging, but I, you know, I think it's important for us to make clear, you know, the direction we're going in. It's not easy work, but Gary, your leadership has been fantastic, and the staff has been great. I know we're not always the easiest board to work with, but I'm really proud of what we're doing and the vision that we have here. So, big stuff next week. We've been, we continue to move and do big things, and I'm excited to be a part of it. So stay tuned, and I'm sure we'll have more to report in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Scholl?
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. On the climate action plans, the city of Portland, this last Wednesday, unanimously approved a five-year, $750 million plan at Climate Action and Environmental Justice. Okay, so the state of Oregon requires counties and cities to have a climate action plan, but as we look at our plan in Clackamas County, let's not lose sight of the cost of it to our families and small business, and let's not place additional tax burden on them. And when the time comes to look at our plan again, let's make sure that we do it based on observable fact and reasonable, attainable goals. On the drug situation, Senator Merkley has sounded the alarm on the opioid situation and wants to boost money to schools for naloxone dispensers. This week, we had another death of fentanyl in the area. This time, it was a 15-year-old girl. Parents, this is not necessary. It is a huge danger, but I ask every parent in Clackamas County to sit down with your children, look at the Clackamas County Sheriff Office video on fentanyl awareness, and please make sure that your child is informed and aware. This is critical. On new legislation, I think you've heard about middle housing. Senate Bill 919 was passed to allow local governments to exempt newly constructed accessory dwelling units, duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes, and I ask property owners to consider this bill and see if it might be something that you can do to improve your situation, maybe your income situation as well. Also, the law will ensure that the tax break only goes to housing stocks for Oregonians and not to out-of-staters who want to build something for a short-term rental. On tolling, you heard Mr. Poole talk about it. This issue has not gone away. Every citizen needs to be aware that potentially you could wake up in January 2026 and be told on driving on R-205. So please go to votebefortolls.org and sign the petition, circulate it amongst your neighbors. Let's fight this threat of tolling together. Finally, on the road ahead, every system runs down and decays. That is what human societies are like. The principal job of a conservative American is not just to hold on to what exists, is to look for restoration, to identify what has become corrupt or decayed, and to look at history for a model of how to repair and rebuild while strengthening the entire system as a whole. Family, history and values must be preserved. These nested hierarchies are imperative for our young people to find meaning and direction in that hierarchy, to inspire them to move up and to strive towards personal success. And as we build a better county, state and nation, we need all Americans working together to move forward with respect for each other regardless of political party. This year, let us all focus on common concerns and real issues so we can actually improve our situation in the county and in this state and in this nation while working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. And yes, Commissioner Schrader, thank you for the ticket for Friday for the Children's Center Gala, and yes, I will mention you.
Okay, well, also, like I said, buy the dinner. Come to my house. Well, actually, you don't have to do that to come to my house.
Okay, that's okay.
Not a problem.
Yeah, thank you for that. We also attended yesterday the Clackamas Service Center's luncheon. It was an annual luncheon. They haven't had it for a while. The place was packed. Oh, my gosh. I drove up to the Abernathy Center early. I thought it was early. I think I took the last parking space almost, and you two also attended. Thank you for that. They were very happy to see Clackamas County there. They have razed a really old building, and they're building a new one, and they honored a 93, or 95, 95-year-old woman.
Anna.
Anna Jones, who has been a volunteer for 50 years. They gave her a nice plaque with her pictures on it, and...
Biggest bouquet of flowers ever.
The biggest bouquet of flowers ever. It was just wonderful to see her there. She was there with her daughter, and she has volunteered steadily for all these years. Thank you to everybody there. I met this week with the Clackamas County Courthouse Arts Committee, of which we have allocated $200,000 grant to employ artists in Clackamas County to have art in our courthouse. Contrary to what the last caller said, we're putting out more money for local artists in art than ever before to our project, the RAC. We send money to Portland, and this board has been consistent lately that any money that is being spent needs to be spent on the people in Clackamas County. Thank you very much for that. Yesterday, Commissioner, you brought up tolling. Yesterday, the Oregon Legislature has convened in the legislative days a Special Transportation Committee on Tolling. We have two Clackamas County representatives on that, Representative Hartman and Representative Lewis. They have asked for our county position on tolling. I am not sure what the outcome of that meeting was, but I am curious to know, even if it was discussed, because as of last week, there has been no instructions from the leadership, from the governor's office or the Oregon Legislature on how, what they should be doing with tolling. And I find that abysmal. I find that, if indeed it's true, an abject failure on the elected leadership in this state to address a problem that no one in this state wants. That's about all I have. I think that's, I think that's good enough. We have finished very early today, commissioners. See no further business before this board. We are adjourned.